We're gonna start off with a moment of silence. About our loss this week in Colorado. Why does that happen? We don't know. And I think every day, it makes it more special to come to work when stuff like that happens. It's brutal and it crushes each and every one of us in a different way. It's crazy. This journey of life is very difficult. And there's so many hard times that we face together. We are just on this journey to help others and be there in the tough times. I know each and every one of our hearts go out to Amy and her family. I can't even imagine the pain and the sorrow. What's gonna happen in her life and the changes that has occurred. But it inspires me to know that she's staying strong. And she'll learn to walk again. And her heart will have a huge hole in it for the rest of her life. It's what makes every day more important. To not make up things, not have hatred towards people, not like people. Accept people for who they are. Don't judge people. Don't think you're better than people. Stand up for yourself. Lift yourself up out of your misery. Quit feeling sorry for yourself. Because we all do it. I do it. I'm a victim. Right? We're all victims. We're not victims, you guys and gals. We're amazing people. We have a journey that we're gonna live. We're gonna touch people and we're helping people every day. And our hearts are huge and we care about people. You know, I can see it in people's faces, the pain. It's because we care. And the reason you're here is because you care and we're different. And we're gonna strive to continue to be different and protect what we have here. And if people don't like it, and they don't think it's real, well, it's real. We're real people. Right? And we expect a lot out of each other. And we're gonna be the best. And people are gonna love it. And we're gonna have fun along the way. We're gonna laugh. We're gonna have parties here. We're gonna say things. We're gonna raise our hand when we're in a bad situation. We're gonna ask for help. And we're gonna lift each other up when we're down. Right? And when somebody's having a bad day, every day, somebody in this building's having a bad day. I can guarantee you, somebody's having a bad day. So when you see that person, give them a hug. Make them smile. Let's laugh. Right? Laughter is a cure for everything. Right? Because I know in the process, we've all lost somebody along the way. It's just part of being a human. We all know we're gonna die. I don't know when we're gonna die. And I say it's a short run because it is a short run. I don't know when it's gonna happen. I don't know who it's gonna happen to. I know that our hearts are gonna be broken again and again. And I really just think it's about, you know, finding the people that wanna be with us. And wanna have something special and help other people. Right? And it's easy to be there when it's simple and everything's going good. It's hard to be there when it's tough. Right? So I know everyone's reached out and pushed and tried to help Amy. Nothing's gonna kill her. I have family members that lost children. It's the most horrific thing that could ever happen. There's no explanation for it. And you wonder why. And I don't think we ever know why. But there's a bigger plan for each and every one of us. The plan for us in these moments is to high-five each other, hug each other, and really just inspire each other to have fun. Right? And to me, the fun meter should be the highest thing that we have here. I love when I see the laughter, the joy, the camaraderie. That's why I try to get people outside their cliques, right, Dina? Right? We have a tendency to go to the same people. But if you got to know the other people in the company, the heart advocate stuff, this is an example of why heart advocate is so powerful. Because if you touch people, if you get to know them, we're just people. Right? And what we wanna do as a society is belong to things. Right? We are trying to build VIP culture and a cult. Right? Right? This is a cult. We wanna be different than everyone else. We wanna be something different. We wanna protect what we have. We wanna have each other's backs. So the people that are here and that get it, they either thrive to be in this environment or they thrive to be away and isolate or, you know, be by themselves. My philosophy is to hug people and high-five them, headbutt them, tackle them, kick them, whatever it works. So for us, it's just, the State of the Union was, you know, really about just enjoying life and being thankful for your loved ones. Being thankful. We're all so blessed to have what we have and the opportunity to be with each other. Every day, it's just, it's amazing that we get to wake up and that we're here. So I wanna challenge each and every one of you. When those things creep into your head about, "I'm not good enough. I'm not worthy," and yourself beating yourself up, do that for like 4% of your day. And the other 95% of your day, tell yourself how amazing you are. And focus on the things that you're good at and quit beating yourself up. Right? And maybe I'm trying to coach myself right now because I always think I can do better or I missed a high-five or a knuckle. Right? I'm like, I didn't get a knuckle everyone today. So like, I just appreciate what we have here. Very thankful for what we're doing together. We're growing something very special. We have a bunch of momentum right now. Thanks to Ryan's, you know, cracked open those gates with building relationships. And we had a great leadership retreat the last day and a half in the back in the think tank. The energy that's coming out of that. We were just in the kitchen. We get a phone call from, you know, Kit Nielsen, who's down in Tempe. He's like, "Oh, I have this great idea." Like, we've got the fire burning and it's a fun fire. And I think it's our job to keep putting logs on that fire and making sure that we all stay warm. And we invite more people into our community that are like us. Right? So for us to continue our growth, and we have to grow, either you're either growing or you're dying. And our job is to grow because we're not gonna die. We will not fail as a company. Right? And there's a lot of things happening in the marketplace. And we're positioned better than I've ever seen. I'm excited about the takeaways. Jason's gonna get out those notes where everyone can see where we're headed. We meet every quarter to readdress big rocks. The team with all your guys' support have moved a bunch of big rocks. We had our best closing month in March of the year. April's shaking out to be the same. Usually April's bigger. The market's shifting. So we're seeing some of that stuff. We're gonna have to work harder. We're gonna have to become more efficient. We're gonna have to make sure we don't make as many mistakes. The competition and the pressure, it's like gamifying your position. I always talk about it. Find a way to get better. You're digging your ditch in your job. What makes it better so you can get through your system faster? So you can go shoot a game of pool or go to your manager and say, "Hey, look, like, I think we can do this. Let's work four-ten's." Or, you know, let's, you know, make it fun. Like, you guys have to come up with the ideas too. And I think on the executive level, we're doing that too. But I think individually, we can do that and communicate. Because if we want an open platform where it's a one-to-one communication, where you guys have the ability to communicate. I know my door's open, Stuart's, John's, everyone's keys. Everyone's door is open. We have the open floor plan. You know, Karen Bailey wanted her own office in the back. Now we can't get her to, you know, she loves her desk out here. She wins the Heart Award. She's like, I haven't told her this yet, but you would never would've won the Heart Award if you were in the back. What's that?
We needed a place for all that stuff.
So I just think the environment's fun. Right? So it's exciting where we're headed. And I'm very proud of what we've done in the first quarter. I've never seen the group work that hard to get things done. The camaraderie, the energy. Some people aren't here that just didn't have a fit. They didn't understand. They didn't understand that we do things together. It's not a dictatorship. We lead up. Right? Keith and I are in the bottom. And we lead up. Right? And we're all leading up to our customer. Our number one customer is the originator. Their number one customer is the referral partners and the customer that are getting loans into the house. Right? The only way we all have a job is these LOs. It's very difficult right now. There's pressure because the pool of loans have shrunk. The refi business has shrunk by over 25%. So us continuing to do the volume we are, we're seeing other people fall off. We see it all over. There's over 100 different companies our size that are up for sale. And they have nothing to sell. Right? So we're going like this and people are going like this. So it's a nice place to be. So there's a lot of security with where we're headed. And we have a bunch of people on deck that are gonna be coming. It's gonna take each and every one of us to go above and beyond. You may have to put in extra hours. You may have to come in on a weekend. You may have to, whatever it takes, we cannot fail and we will not fail at bringing these people on. And we have to understand when we bring these people on in the next quarter, they're gonna be in a position where it's very stressful. Right? And we have to be the calm in the storm for them. Right? So if you have a team that has bandwidth, you may have files. Right? So and I think you just gotta wanna step up and lead and take it to the next level and show them HR has done a great job keeping me boxed up. I've been going to my classes. But anyway, I'm glad I had a joke. I'm stalling out. My plane is running out of fuel. But anyway, what else do we have? Let's, give me one exciting thing, probably, since you're laughing so hard. Give me one thing from the tech side.
The tech side, we got a bunch of new products that we're, you know, engaged with doing. Flawify the online application, making that super efficient for the customer. We just finished integrating with that. We integrated with Encompass Little Tires. We got a lot more data in Salesforce and Spear. So you can see more stuff that's happening in Encompass just in Salesforce for reporting and everything. And it's on the fly. It's like right there. So you hit refresh, it's there. So and we're working to tighten that up, making sure it's all clean. So those are two nice areas.
Awesome. And we got Suggs is gonna do an HR. Come on up, Suggs. Sam's gonna do a kickball tournament. It's gonna be, or game?
Not, not tournament yet.
Not a tournament? Oh, game. Sam's got it set up. There's flyers, so they want us to do.
Flyers.
Team Jane, Team Keith. So I'm gonna pick first.
It's random team draw.
Oh, it's random?
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's pick now. Where's the schedule? I do everything backwards, so I like reverse.
Friday, April 20th, 5:30.
Friday, April 20th. Who's all gonna be around Friday, April 20th? Raise your hand. Keith, are you gonna be here?
Yes. We're clearing his schedule.
Okay, raise your hand if you're gonna be around Friday, April 20th. You're gonna play kickball. There's pressure, it's peer pressure right now. Who's afraid? What's happening right here? This is bad. See, it's not even working. The peer pressure is not working. Keith, it's gonna be you and I against each other. All right, go ahead, Johnny.
Yeah, so, look, thanks, Jay. We got a bunch of fun stuff coming. And that's why I wanted to highlight Samantha. She's organized two, really three events. So we got kickball, Friday, April 30th. Just show up as many people as possible. It's not like we need just nine on each team. I've done this where you've had 20 people on each team. So we want everybody to come out for that, for that event.
Yeah.
Flyers are right here. Help yourself. Grab one information on there. It's just gonna be, by the way, just down the street from here. We haven't secured that location just yet. But it's just gonna be like a mile from where. It's just gonna be a field. We're gonna have lights on the field. So don't worry. It's gonna go 5:30 to about 8-ish or whatever. But we'll have the lights on the field. It's gonna be a great night. And, you know, if you guys love it, then it's something we're gonna keep doing on there. The next weekend, Samantha, there's another event of which you guys have already been signing up for. It's a little more strenuous. The Foam Fest 5K. Now, I don't want you guys to think, we're gonna make sure you don't, it says 5K. It's not really. That's just because it's the distance. This is a Foam Fest. This is one of these things where you run through soap foams and slides and you crawl mud. You crawl through things. There's no time. Right? You go as teams. She already has 14 people signed up. Special hats off to Tempe. Tempe signed up seven people alone on there. So that is Saturday, April the 28th. It's at 9:00 AM somewhere in Chandler.
Rawhide.
What's that?
At Rawhide.
I-Rawhide?
Rawhide.
Rawhide. Thank you.
At Rawhide. VIP is subsidizing $20 off that price on there. We can do a payroll deduction. See Samantha for that. She has the forms to just deduct it from your paycheck. But we're gonna subsidize $20. And we're gonna get some kind of cool t-shirts so everybody will get them. Let her know too, because if your family wants to go, they can go as well. This is not just VIP. This is your families. But we all would like to wear VIP t-shirts that are being designed specifically for that event. And we're gonna pay for that t-shirt as well. So see Samantha down there. Super funny event, two weeks in a row. This is some of the things that, you know, we're doing for you guys. Is that good?
Yes.
All right. So those are two things coming up. I wanna tell you about that. I have two more things coming up to tell you guys about. So one that is quite as exciting is our benefits open enrollment. Most of you know, but just reminder, it starts Monday. You can start signing up for new benefits. It'll run for two weeks and ends April the 20th. Next week, we have a class and a wellness fair. It's gonna happen here. So the class is in the morning, I believe at 9:00 AM. We're gonna have a class in the think tank. Anybody wants to learn about all your benefits next week, 9:00 AM Friday. But then in here, we're gonna have like 10 different healthcare vendors come in that you can mingle and meet with them. But we will have also our healthcare providers here. As far as Cigna will be here. So you can really dig in deep if we didn't answer all your questions on that particular day. If you missed that event, the following week, there're gonna be a couple of webinars. We'll send out announcements on that. But there'll be a couple of webinars as well. If you happen to be in Tucson, we're gonna duplicate in Tucson. Next Tuesday, there's gonna be a wellness fair plus a class. And that's on Tuesday in Tucson. So I wanna tell you about the open enrollment, the benefits. I wanna tell you about a couple of changes to the benefits, just to be aware. So first, along the theme of heart, we did have a rough year with employees being sick. And we tried to take care of each other, right, on there. But as a result, we do have rates going up this year. So I don't want you guys to be surprised. About a 10% increase. So when you guys see that. But what we have structured, we've made some other changes where it actually could be cheaper to you. So base rates have gone up. But we've added some different programs for you to look at that could be cheaper. And what we're gonna be doing is kinda nudging you guys to try out, if you don't already, our high deductible programs. We have normally a $5,000 high deductible. You guys probably know that. You think that's really high. So we've added a cheaper, a lower one, a $2,500 to try to nudge people in. And we have two programs coming out that you're saying, "Okay, that's great, John." But it's still, I'm a little nervous on there. So here's what you're gonna get. You're gonna see in the program. And we have this telehealth, it's called. And somebody you've tried before to call a doctor. You can call a doctor today on the phone. And but it's depending what program you're on. It's either $40 or like $65. But you can get a script over the phone. You can say, "Look, I think I got pink eye. I think I got an infection." Right? And the doctor will take care of you over the phone. And there's people in here that will testify. They've tried and they're like, "Yeah, that works amazing." Now, if you break your arm, you got a bone sticking out of your arm. You know, I don't think they can really help you on there. But what we're gonna do is we're offering this service free of charge for people in the high deductibles. So the point is it's called telehealth. It's gonna, through a company called Fresh Bennys. But the idea is that now people in the high deductibles, instead of paying $100 plus every time you see doctors, you can call a doctor, you can do a video chat with a doctor free of charge, anytime. And you can get that script over the phone. You can be sitting here at work. "I don't feel too good." Call a doctor up, free. Write you a script, go down there, pharmacy and pick it up. So that's a new benefit that you'll see coming. Second benefit that loops into a wellness program. So we are launching a new wellness program. We sent out the survey. Thank you very much. We got a ton of responses. We're gonna announce today or tomorrow the name of the program. I keep calling it wellness, but I'm gonna change because you guys picked something else. And so I'm gonna, we're in the finalizing what that's gonna get called. A key piece to that program is you're all enrolled in a new application that we're gonna roll out. You can put it on your computer. You can put it on your phone. It's called Incent Fit. But the point on that program is that through activities that it'll lay out there, you can get an additional $600 a year deposited into your healthcare savings account if you're in the high deductible program. If you're not in the high deductible program, you can still get $600 a year to use for shopping online at stores, getting gift certificates, or even donating to your favorite charity. Those funds can be, can be used. But the point from healthcare is that we're gonna provide a way that you guys can all get an additional $600 a year deposited into your health savings account to help encourage people to go into the high deductible program. So my message to you is you're gonna see higher rates, but they're not higher if you go into these high deductible programs, seriously. We're gonna give you the telehealth for free to help you go see the doctors. And then you're also, through a wellness initiative, if you guys exercise, you can get additional $600 a year deposited into your health savings account. So that's kind of the things. You're gonna see when we roll out this wellness program with the new branding on there. Normally, the reason Samantha's up here too, her events would fall under that umbrella. And as Samantha loves doing these types of things, we're gonna start branding those and sending it out to the whole company under that brand. That's all hitting next week too. You're gonna see a video. Paul over here is, Chavez is doing a great video. He's gonna come out next week with it. You're gonna see that. It's gonna be about this new application called Incent Fit that you all are enrolled in regardless of the healthcare program that you signed on. So we're excited about that. Sign up for your benefits on Monday. My little final plug is that if you guys have a passion, you know, at VIP, part of our mission is to provide people with, that has a passion for doing something and avenue to actually obtain those. And again, I'm gonna pick on Samantha because she has this passion to do stuff. And now we've got this vehicle under wellness that if you really wanna do something, we have the funds to support you in that endeavor. So let us know if you have something in the wellness realm that you really wanna do. And we'll help you get there and let you, you know, provide the funding to get there as well.
Thanks, Johnny. Good. Kickball. All right, just real quick, 'cause I wanna know the why, right? You touched on the why a little bit, why it's going up. The funny part is we've been battling for what?
What?
Like two months, like trying to get this down. Because when the increase first came out, it was like 36%. This number might be off a little bit, but appreciate what he did because he drove that price way down. And some of the things that happened, I wanna just make sure you guys understand that when we're in a health plan, we're in it together. Right? So if we have, we had three different people in the family have brain cancer. I can't mention names. Right? That's like, and when you look at the statistical data on that, that, that is like an anomaly of a group this size. Right? So what I want you guys to know is that we did this together. We helped those families. Right? And it didn't put them out of, you know, they're not losing their homes. They're not, you know, there's a lot of tragedy that happened in those stories. Right? But because of us and all of us, right, we're taking on that responsibility together. So when you look at this, I want you to look at it that we did it together and we helped each other. Right? Because I think it's important to understand how health insurance works. So it's only as good, like if we can recruit younger people, Jay and Keith. Mike's is in good shape. We got some young bucks. You know, we're trying our best. Right? So I think, I just wanna make sure you guys understand how it works. So when you see that, remember, you know, we try to do our best to make it better. And I think John did an amazing job. At a DU, you were in a bunch of those meetings. You know, Chris Scherzer, you know, just kept going to battle for us. We have a bunch of different strategies to help us going forward in the future. So we're gonna continue to keep working on that. So anyway, as far as in closing, Keith, you guys, anybody have anything to say, Keith?
You know, speaking for the sales department, I think if we were all at a birthday party and we hit the pinata and the candy fell out, all the loan officers are trying to pick up this candy. And these last couple of months, it's like the pinata got hit and like four candies dropped out. And all the loan officers in the valley are trying to pick up this, this little bit of candy. So they're fighting, kicking and scratching. You know, Ryan, the work you're doing, we now have like, you know, sixth graders on the sideline instead of these little third graders trying to get the candy. We're getting these really big, powerful teams and really good people. So, you know, that's what feeds this whole engine is we gotta get loans. So think, think about that. Yeah, we have other cool things coming up. We've got, we're the lead sponsor on the awards bank with the MAME Awards, which is all the biggest builders actually in the country. They do a big award thing. And we just happen to be doing loans for three of the top 10 builders. So we're gonna go high-five and celebrate that and try to get some more builder traction. Because that could easily, when Jay talks about 25% down in business from the refi bucket, that builder bucket could really fill that thing. So we're gonna, we're gonna hit, we're gonna hit that. I had a personal errand run this morning. My wife and I were driving back and we did catch, you know, we're from Denver and that's where Amy lives. And we watched the news reel on that. So I'll get that out. It's pretty tough to watch that thing. But our, one of my favorite places to go is Red Rocks. They filled that place up there with a ceremony. You know, it's pretty, you know, you're touching people when you can fill an entire stadium. And they did a balloon release, so that's cool. And that's it. That's all I got, Jaybird.
Stu, you wanna say something?
It's hard to follow the pinata analogy.
Uh, you know, I, I guess what I can add is, like, two quick things, you know, you got, I, what I've learned in the last couple of years is, you know, I'm a guy who's been at this company a long time and I never really cared what other people were doing, meaning outside the company walls, didn't really matter to me what the competition was doing, just do the right thing here and things will work, right? And, uh, in the last few years with the heavy recruiting and all the stuff Ryan's been doing, just inevitably, we learn, you know, what's kind of happening outside these walls and it's been a really great process for us to see that how great it is here, not that I ever thought it wasn't great here, this is my blood, this place, but it's so amazing to be validated because you get so stuck in the sand on what you're working on and you think, "Gosh, this should be better, why aren't we better at this?" And then you go see what our competitors and other people are doing and you realize, "Oh my gosh, we're like a level nine on this thing that I thought I was a level two on and this guy is like not even there yet." So for whatever that's worth, it's, it's good to know that stuff, so I know that's been a great experience for us and, uh, secondly, I would just say that, you know, like, and that from, coming from personal experience, sort of, my wife and I are going through some stuff, nothing bad, just life decisions on some things and she asked me the other day, she goes, "Do you think we have the bandwidth for all this?" And I, I started laughing, I go, "Are you, what kind of question is that?" I'm like, "We got two little kids, another one on the way, job, life, family." I go, "Bandwidth?" I go, "What, you think we're just going to hit like a six-month stride of everything being calm and nothing going on?" I'm like, "That doesn't even make sense to me." And then she started laughing and I'm like, and then it made me realize, I bring it up because bandwidth is really a state of mind, right? So you might think you're too busy for something or you're not making time for someone in your life, um, something great, someone close to me just said recently, who lost their father, who's like 95, he reached out and he sent a message to a group plus and he said, "You know, today's a good day to find someone that's tough to love and give it a try." And I thought that was a pretty cool statement. Um, so again, bandwidth is a state of mind, you can do whatever you want and you're, you're your own obstacle, that's for sure, I've learned that. So you're your own wall in front of you that you're the only one that's going to stop whatever is in your head, so get the stuff out of your head, get organized and get after it. Yeah. That's it. Anybody want to say something? This is fun.
I'll say something. Um, this is more of a, a sales pitch, actually. So a lot of you have all worked at other companies and, um, like, like Stu just addressed, you know, this is a special place to be at and we are trying to bring over good people and we've had a lot of luck with finding people that, that fit our culture, that want to be here more for, uh, the fact that the culture is great, because if these guys are great, they can get their loans done no matter where they go, it's going to work. So, um, but a lot of people are reluctant to, to talk to their friends and ask about and so, you know, you have people that you're friends with at other companies, um, you know, ask them what's going on there, who, who's a good LO, who's a good, you know, ops person, you know, whatever, um, and then relay that stuff to, to us, specifically me or Keith, um, or Jack. And, um, you, you know, the company can benefit from having good people, but we're, we're just letting people kind of sit around and figure stuff out and you might, you might have a family member or a good friend that is, is an LO at a different company, that they might not be happy if you've never really asked. So that comes up, that's it, just, just ask around.
Anyone else? The awards ceremony, how many people made it to that? Like the above and beyond? Like, how about that setup? Great job, team, who set that up? It was pretty cool, we were in a recruiting meeting and I'm sitting there and Holly gets all excited because she won an above and beyond award and she goes, "Jade," she didn't say this to Jade, but she said it to somebody in the room, she said, "It's weird how we actually care about the employees too, because it's, for us, it's, we're doing this together, it's not sales against ops, right? We're only as good as our weakest link." And it was pretty cool when she had this huge smile and like she left her, they're like, "Wow, you guys do care," right? So what happens is it's infectious and what, every one of you probably could have won the award, right? We can't give it to everyone, but in my mind, I would like to give it to everyone, um, because I do think it takes each and every one of us to do that and I think, you know, unfortunately, sometimes you just get voted, right? And if you're behind the scenes, but you're forward facing on some of those surveys, I just want to recognize you because if I'm always touching people and the survey goes out, they may not know your name, but you probably went above and beyond in your position. So I don't want you to think that we don't recognize that and I think it's very important that each person here, we can't do it without you and I just want to say thank you. I know Keith and I appreciate, the sales team appreciate you, it gives us sales confidence, right? And that's what drives us to be the most successful company, you know, in Maricopa, in Arizona, number one place is the work, it was because you guys said it was, it wasn't because we went around and put a gun to your head, right? So, um, I appreciate everything you guys do and gals do, it's amazing, it's fun to win these awards and we want them together, we're better together and we're going to continue to build relationships for life and help people with heart achieve more than they ever could alone. So our elevator speech that we came up with yesterday, I'm still learning it, Coach Bum did a great job, we put him on a spot, on the spot and he had something to look at and I'm trying to visualize it right now and it's, what is going to be your why? And I think I talk about it a lot, what is your why? Because we want to help you find out what your why is and use this vehicle to help you get there. So it's exciting and we're going to be different than everyone else and it starts with each and every one of us, so we'll bring people through, they can feel that energy and it's very, um, honorable for me to walk through here, day in and day out with people that are looking to join our family and see the calmness in the room. They say, "Are you sure this is a mortgage company? Are you guys sure this is mortgage?" Because it doesn't feel like it, like people are freaking out going, "Where's my blue dogs? Missing another closer? Come on, you can work harder! Come on!" Because I've been in those places and we hate those places, so we love you guys, have a great day, high-five your friends, hang out for four minutes and talk to somebody you don't know, come on! Come on! Don't go to your dad. Let it go! Come on! Yeah! 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 High-five! Woo!